Namaste. Welcome back after playing weeks after weeks in different directions. Lighter practice, stronger practice and playing into the directions, playing into the breath, playing to the mind, one thing you may absorb. Throughout the last few weeks, we stressed about breath. Breath, breath, yes. One thing, always remember the breath is the most important part in our life. Remember, the life starts with your first breath. Our lives ends with our last breath. Ah, in between, every single breath, start observing it. The breath can be practiced in different way. Yes, that is exactly we are going to explore today. A different way to put our breath to calm the mind. When you start paying attention on your breath, mind calms down. Sway, remember the freedom of thoughts, once your breath is present. When your breath is present, your freedom follows you. That’s what exactly we will explore in this class. I just request everyone, always play with your practice, don’t fight. “Oh, I can’t do it, I don’t get it.” Pay attention, slow down a little bit and look into your practice. You see the differences. Yes, are you ready? Yes, the first one, I want to refresh for you. This already we did in the fast, the early stage of our practices. It’s called Mukadhavi. One of the powerful technique to quickly calm down your mind and slow down your breath. Yep, I explained to you, but I’m refreshing that again. If you want to quickly calm down your mind and relax your body, in case you’re exhausted or tired, stressed, Mukadhavi is one other powerful technique to play around. I know, you would say, “Let us do it, right?” Yeah, “Don’t rush, okay, all this we’ve worked hard, now we’ll try to understand what we do.” Yep, are you ready? Keep the legs and approximately shoulder distance wider. Bend the knees and rest the palms comfortably on your thigh or on your knee. Make sure no stress on the neck or shoulder. Relax your face and don’t forget to smile in the beginning. When you do, you can’t smile there, yeah? You have to concentrate on your breath. Inhale smoothly and long through the nose, exhale actively through the mouth. Yeah, shall we try? But in case you have a full belly, please don’t do this. In case you have any sore throat, avoid it, okay? And otherwise, just try. Shall we try? We’ll try around 10 times together. Are you ready? Okay. No rush, no pressure on the knees, no pressure on the shoulder, well relaxed. Inhale smoothly and long. Exhale actively. Again. The last one. Very good. Stop there. Stand uplifted, take your hands behind your back, close your eyes, just watch any change you can find. We did around 10 of them, just look what the reaction from the 10 now. Don’t imagine anything, just witness. You may see a lot of warmness around the belly and active circulation. You may experience some sensation on your lips, around the mouth, sometime also on your facial muscles. Breath may stop for a few seconds or become so. More than anything, see the mind is quiet. Body is energized. Mind is quiet. Body energized. Just witness these two important fact. That means breath coordinated well. In case any reverse impact on that, then re-check your practice. Those beautiful changes around there. The breath is almost back to normal now. Watch that. Almost normal now. See the complete lightness in the body, breath and mind now. With few gentle blinks, open your eyes. The next one. I hope you understood the active exhalation and whole body, every cell exhales there, right? In Mukadhavi, every cell exhales when you exhale. When you inhale, every cell absorbs the inhalation. But when you consistently and regularly done, one of the powerful practice to prevent stressing out. Not only release the stress, it prevents stressing out, but best to practice morning as soon as you get up. After this, the second important practice called Agnisara. Agni means fire, Sara is essence. Remember, our life is become active when there is a fire. The fire reduces, we become dull. Fire is too much, we have become overactive. But balancing this is very important. That exactly Agnisara does. Okay, you only know that, but I’m just reminding you this, refreshing you this importance of that. This is also has to be done empty stomach early morning, not during the day. Okay, early morning before taking any food into the belly. And which one of the powerful practice, you know that already in details, but how to do? We’ll just quickly do. This only thing I want to see, show you how different way you can approach your breath. Agnisara, you have to move your belly front and back with a neutral in the breath or with the coordination of the breath, two way you can do it. We’ll do the coordination of the breath. Okay, that is actually very lighter one, you know the other one also. What we need to do again, yeah, stand a shoulder distance wider, rest the palms on your belly, watch the breath, watch the breath. Remember, Agnisara also corrects your breath. If you have a stressful breathing, that will be corrected by your Agnisara. While inhale, push the belly out. While exhale, pull the belly in. Inhale, push the belly out. Exhale, pull the belly in. Inhale, belly out. Exhale, belly in. Only pelvis, inhale out, exhale in. Inhale out, exhale in. You can see the pelvic contracts, lower abdominal contracts. Inhale, belly out, exhale in. Inhale, exhale. Inhale, exhale. See the contraction, the last one. Inhale, exhale. Now just watch, there is a little warmness. Yeah, this is very short one, you can do this coordination, anything between around 20 to 30, then you can observe. But as you already practicing this, I’m just refreshing what you already know. Just watch around there, the amount of changes. The changes on your aspiration, presence of mind. Okay, that is a lighter version. Yeah, in case it’s very good and comfortable, what we do normally, the next stage, we let the breath happen natural, only move the belly. That is the second stage of the Agnisara. Your belly goes front and back, but breath is neutralized completely. That means breath happens, but it goes so light and like you know the fire, which is releases all the blocked energy in the system. Okay, Agnisara is very powerful to prevent any kind of digestive issues. It may be constipation, indigestion, irritable bowel syndrome or gastric related issues, everything can be balanced by a consistent regular practice of Agnisara, must practiced in the early morning before taking any food. I hope you got some idea about your Agnisara now. Okay, now these are the two types of standing breathing techniques. Yes, I have one more technique for you. We didn’t do this in the fast, but it’s a new one for you now. It is called rabbit breathing. What, rabbit breathing? Yes, we breathe like a rabbit. You know, we can breathe like rabbit, we breathe like a dog. Yes, there are different impact will gets. The rabbit breathing is normally a quick breathing, which is one of the powerful technique people have in respiratory related issues and helps to create more space there. But not during asthma attack or bronchitis attack, you should not try, but regularly when you practice, the chance of attack drastically drops. More than that, it calms down the mind very quickly and it’s one of the very helpful people suffering from tonsillitis. Anyone heard about tonsillitis? Yes, the tonsillitis really helpful. Shortness of breath, running nose, migraine, tension headache, so many things, sinusitis, yeah, any of this, like you know, the upper limbs related problems. Not only that, there is a strong work on the belly. When you do rabbit, the belly moves like a Agnisara only and that releases a lot of stress associated your digestive system, pancreas, spleen, liver. Okay, and very helpful for your heart. Yes, you can do in a short time, like you know, preferably done with the empty stomach again, before breakfast, before lunch, before dinner, you can do this, not a problem. But don’t rush, you know, this is our only technique you have to carry for further for your practice. And remember, the breath can be smoothed by different direction, that’s what I wanted to share with you guys. Okay, you have to sit on your heels. Then just bend front, yeah, just like you know, Shashankasana. And place the hands in front, yeah? Looks something like a rabbit now? And approximately, yeah? Okay, now what we need to do, put your tongue between your teeth and your lip. Feel it. Hmm? Yeah, then like tongue is kind of locked, then we have to breathe from the mouth. Okay, just like you know Mukadhavi, we are exhaling through the mouth, but here inhale and exhale both happens through the mouth. In case you have a coughing, particularly dry cough and all, little careful. Okay, and high blood pressure and heart problem, bit smoothly try, it’s helpful. But you can’t do the speed, you have to start very slow. Yeah, ready? Yeah, I’ll show you once, then we will do together. Are you ready? Hmm? In case it’s too difficult, it’s okay, you can keep it like this, no problem. Then we do breathe quick, maybe around 20-30 seconds, yeah? No rush. Stop there and watch what change you can find. It’s beautiful changes there. But you got some idea now, no? Shall we try once? I’m repeating again, in case you have a high blood pressure, heart problem, please do low, very slow one, okay? Inhale and exhale both comes from the mouth. In case you have sore throat and tonsillitis or dry cough, please avoid during the these kind of issues. But other day when you practice regularly, that is prevents completely, okay? Are you ready? Yes, come on. Sit on your heels, bend front, take your hands on the floor, keep the tip of the tongue between teeth and lip. We’ll concentrate 30 seconds. In case you’re tired, immediately stop, just watch, close your eyes and watch what change you can find. You may feel little sensation around the face and sometime dryness on the throat, nothing to stress, initially that happens. Good. Prepare, relax your body, relax your mind, relax your breath and we start. Don’t rush, don’t rush, slowly, in case you’re tired, please stop. Sometime you feel lot of pressure on the belly, don’t force. Work in your comfort limit, you can you do slow, no problem. Don’t rush, don’t rush. Very good, very good. Few more seconds, few more, ah, that’s good, stop. Just close your eyes, be there and just close your eyes. See any change you can find around on your face or on your head and on respiration, on your belly, on your back muscles, on your spine, any part of the body. Just keep witnessing as it is. Eyes closed for a few seconds. You may experience a little bit pain on your belly, in case you drank water or something, you may had some sound is on your belly or it hurts also sometime. In case you have a food also, it hurts sometime. These are just in a consequence of not following the basic rules. Okay, shall we try one more time? In case you’re tired, just watch. Otherwise, we try once again, yeah? Very good. Bend front, okay. Sit on your heels, good. Take a tip of the tongue between teeth and lip, start, 30 seconds only. Don’t force, you may get a little coughing. Keep going, keep going. Go slower if necessary. Throat little get dry, that’s okay. If it’s too difficult, immediately come back and stop, no problem. Stop. Close your mouth, close your eyes, just watch. You can sit back on your heels also. Close your eyes, shoulder relaxed, watch as there any change you can find around. On your diaphragm, pancreas, spleen, liver, intestine, belly, the entire belly, back muscles, lungs, the heartbeat also goes little quick, sometime throat has little dryness, there is some sensation on the face, sometimes suddenly the nasal walls clears, mind goes sometime light headed, any of those things, just witness as it is. Don’t imagine, if there, is there, if not there, it’s not there. It’s not there means you need to correct your practice a bit more. If any one of them there, just start witnessing, don’t create. Overall, just watch the quietness of the mind. Mind so quickly become quiet with simple techniques. Good, the breath is almost coming back to normal now. Watch that, that’s beautiful. Now, with few gentle blinks, open your eyes. Very good. You see, the last three techniques are different way presented. I’ll take one more technique, it is called bellows of blacksmith. Yeah, we can breathe like in a bellows of blacksmith, isn’t it? See, imagine. But you have to remember, in case you have a respiratory related issues, neck related issues, heart related issues or any kind of hernia during the menstruation cycle, one should do a lighter washing. You can practice, but very light version has to be started with. There is a first one we work together, yeah? Okay, the other thing is you have to remember, see you know this is other way, here the inhalation and exhalation both will be doing active. Rabbit breathing, we did in the mouth, but Bastrika, we are doing through the nasal walls or nostrils. Yep, you’re ready? Okay, I know, she says, “Okay, come on, we’ll do it.” Yeah, but few important thing, you have to be coordinate your arms with the breath. When you inhale, the arms raises up, exhale, arms drops down, okay? Inhale, arms raises up, exhale, arms drops down. In case you have a shoulder pain, neck pain, you can do 2, 3, 4, then stop, no problem, okay? Don’t fight, yeah? And in case you have a high blood pressure and other thing, go slow, slowest possible. In case you feel uncomfortable of any condition, stop immediately, just close the eyes and watch. Only one thing, don’t open your eyes in between. If you open your eyes in between, you get blocked out, okay? There is a mistake, you can’t do that. Sometime you can’t balance it. Okay, in case you have a low blood pressure, you may experience time to time here and there, but nothing to stress, it’s good. Are you ready now? You can, okay, you can sit in this Vajrasana or you can also sit comfortably with a simple cross leg or Padmasana. You can sit simple like this or also you can cross the legs, one on the top or the other, it is called Padmasan or lotus pose. Then make the spine uplifted and make sure no stress on the knee, any position you are in. If it is too difficult, you can also sit in chair, no problem. But only make sure from the hip to the head, straight and active. Are you ready? See inhale and smoothly raise your arms up. While exhaling, drop the arms. Okay, I’ll do a little quicker one. See entire inhalation and exhalation works on your lungs. Your lungs is the bellows here. You know the blacksmith bellows, your lungs is that right now. It works so good. Are you ready? Shall we try? Please don’t force. If you are not understood, just watch once. The second round you can do with me. We’ll do slow one first. Inhale and raise up, exhale. Inhale, very good. Inhale, exhale. Inhale, exhale. Inhale, exhale. Three more. Stop. Inhale your breath for a while and hold as long as you can. Please don’t force, if you’re not comfortable, just leave as it is. Just watch. Breath automatically stops for some time. On not only breath, you can see your mind is blocked, almost blank right now. But circulation is active. See that, breath gradually comes back. Keep witnessing for a while. That’s beautiful. Shall we try one more? Yes, don’t force, just 20 strokes, yeah? Okay. Spine uplifted, inhale and stretch, exhale. 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. Stop. Eyes remain closed. Watch whatever changes around there. Don’t put any effort. The breath is completely neutral for some time. Not only breath, the mind is goes completely neutral also. It quickly slows down the mind. And the powerful practice to improve the lungs capacity, release the strain from neuromuscular In case you were working every day under a lot of stress, every day morning, try to perform around 3 to 10 times of this. That gives lot of relief from the shoulder, shoulder blade, neck, respiratory system, back muscles, digestive system, more than anything, any kind of stress will be minimized by consistent practice. You know, the breath almost back to normal now. We feel fresh, we feel energetic. With few gentle blinks, open your eyes. I know you want to do so many and we also have so many different breathing techniques. But today, I want to show you a quick session of deep relaxation technique. We can just like you know, 5 to 10 minutes if you spend every day, even using there also breath, you can relax very quickly. A different way you can relax there, one of the technique there is a breath. Maybe we’ll do a quick one, you like to do it? I know you love it. Your knee not hurts in this, your back not hurts in this, your neck not hurts in this. Ah, yes, you are right, Inshavasana. Okay, what we need to do, slowly lower on your back. Okay, slowly raise your legs and lower on your back and let the legs free, let the hands free, let the entire body relaxed. The form facing up, the toes thrown out freely, no stress in any part of the body, let the whole body rested. Then eyes gently closed, mouth also closed, with the whole body right from the toes till the head, it’s beautifully relaxing. With the freedom of every breath now. During the inhalation, the whole body expands. During the exhalation, entire body shrinks. In case you have a high blood pressure or depression, little bit careful in it, you can just instead of lying on your back, you can lie down on your belly in condition of And in between, you may feel a little bit uncomfortable, it’s okay, it’ll be alright later. Now gradually draw your attention around the navel, around the navel. Watch that, during the inhalation, navel raises up. During the exhalation, navel drops. Watch that. Inhalation, navel raises up. Exhalation drops. We did 2 now, we’ll do 25 more. 25 navel raises. You’re not creating, you’re just witnessing, drops. Navel raises up and drops, 24. Inhalation, navel raises. Exhalation, navel drops, 23. 22. Don’t rush, don’t rush, don’t force. 21. I’m just counting your breath now. 20. During inhalation, navel raises, during exhalation, navel drops. 19. 18. 17. You’re not creating, you’re raising belly. You’re just witnessing as it flows. You can see the belly has a movement to your breath. 14. 13. 12. Eleven. Ten. Nine. Eight. Seven. Just keep watching your navel and surrounded area. Six. Five. Four. Don't force, three. Two. One. Seventeen. Sixteen. Fifteen. With the whole body. During inhalation, not only the navel raises, the entire body expands. But during the exhalation, the whole body shrinks. Inhalation, body expand right from the toes till head, every single cell become energetic. Exhalation, it releases all the rigidness and exhaustion out completely. Inhalation, the oxygen rejuvenating every single cell. Whole body almost floating, witness that. We are totally relaxed now, right from the toes till the head. Watch that, mind is so quiet now. See the lightness in the breathing. The body almost floating right now. And totally energized. Smoothly bring your legs together. Inhale and raise your hands over your head. Inhale and stretch, 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 stretch. And release. Now turn to your side. And just stay there for few seconds, watch your breath. Roll in and gradually come to seated position. Minimize the movement. Watch the breathing. It is so relaxed. Not only breath is relaxed, mind also relaxed so beautifully. Take your hands behind your back, exhale and bend front as far as you comfortably can. Inhale and slowly come up. Release your hands. Gently rub your palms. Cover on your cup. Feel warmness around the eyes. Rub your palm on your cheek, with gentle finger massage. With few gentle blinks, open your eyes and see straight your hands. Are you breathing? Superb, thank you. Remember, breath is one of the most important thing in our life. It starts the life, it ends the life. But it gives enough space to live and don't forget that. That can give you lot of freedom and experience this world beautifully. Only one request with everyone, every now and then, at least every one hour, once, just watch your own breath. Once in every hour, just bring your consciousness on your breathing for one minute. Do twenty-one days. You see, the change happens within you. Thank you for joining. I loved spending time with you the last eight weeks. Hopefully you enjoyed and hopefully you learned something which changed you in the course of this eight week. Maybe some of you took little longer time. But go back and refresh again and again and you will understand the depth. And more than anything, as a person, we grow big, bright and strong. One important thing, don't forget, always play with your practice, don't fight. After every practice, you smile. I know, I was watching, each time the smile says, wow. Thanks for showing that smile and keep practicing, thank you. I'm always say, Danya Vadab, that means thank you.